Welcome back, everyone. We're now at the second half of the 2025 Haverhill School Committee Candidate Forum. We are now featuring the candidates by ward. As I said at the start of this production tonight, the Haverhill School Committee will look substantially different come January with more than half of its existing members not seeking reelection. So this is the audience's chance to become familiar with candidates running in what may well be one of the city's most consequential school elections in recent memory. If you're just joining us, a few minutes ago, we heard from Haverhill's at-large school committee candidates. Now candidates from most of the city's seven wards will be asked to give one-minute answers each to five questions. By the way, I did make a mistake the first time, so are the other candidates from the first half still here? Because we didn't do closing statements. So we'll do that if you'd stay around. In any event, the ground rules, if you have them, we will give one minute for each answer, and we will give, you'll see a yellow flag when you have 15 seconds left or a red one when you have the, when you're out of time. All right. Ward candidates who are present with us: Bobby Brown, Ward 2; David Schultz, Ward 3; Amanda Baselier, Ward 4; Jill Story, Ward 5; Yanni Collins, Ward 6; Thomas Graneman, Ward 7. Let's go right to the questions. Given that most of you are running unopposed, was changing to ward representation a good idea? And let's start with Bobby Brown.
Well, thank you, and I feel that my, it was a no-brainer as far as choice whether to run at-large or ward, for Ward 2. You know, it's my community, my daughter's school, other schools in our community for my friends and family members, and I really just want to give back to my community directly and make sure that I'm representing them accurately.
Thank you very much. And we move on to David Schultz.
I have to say, I like the ward, the change to ward for city council, but I kind of think that maybe school committee is something they should have left citywide for the seats. Council, it's nice to have neighborhood representation. I'm not sure, like, for example, the ward that I'm in, Ward 3, there's not even a school in Ward 3. And I wonder how much local representation there would, there was necessary for that where I kind of think citywide might work just fine, so.
Amanda Baselier.
I'm definitely for ward representation. I think it's really important to make sure that the citizens from each corner of the city are represented in local government. I think it's going to take some time. I think we need to go through a couple of cycles and build up that momentum in the neighborhoods that are not used to being represented to make sure that they can gain confidence and feel, feel good about stepping up and making sure that, that the voices are heard in their neighborhoods.
Thank you very much. And Jill Story, Ward 5.
Thank you. I was definitely in favor of ward representation and supported that change, and I continue to be in favor of it. I think it's important being in Ward 5. There wasn't somebody sitting on school committee in the area that I lived in, and, you know, I'm obviously spending a lot of time talking to the people in and around my neighborhood when we're talking, when we have our kids in school and when we're standing by the bus and things like that. And so I think being, being able to be responsive to constituents in, as Amanda said, in all areas of Haverhill is really important. And I think the issue is more so like people wanting to run, right? Because it's, it's a ton of work, and then serving, public service is a lot of work. And so it's, it's finding those people and identifying them and making sure that they feel supported with, with that choice.
Thank you very much. And Yanni Collins, Ward 6.
Thank you. I believe ward representation is very important, just as Haverhill is very diverse. We need people from all corners and angles of Haverhill to have their voices represented at the table.
Thank you very much. And Thomas Graneman, Ward 7.
Yeah, I support the ward representation. I think it has brought in more diversity and more people to school committee that might not have run otherwise. And I think it is, is, there is an issue of, we have to be getting people to run, and, but I think whether we come from wards or at-large, I think everybody should have the entire city at, at, at the core of what they're doing as a school committee member.
Thank you very much. The legislature is moving toward allowing school districts to impose a so-called bell-to-bell ban on student cellphone use. Do you support an all-day student cellphone ban? And this time, we're going to start with David Schultz.
I do, because I think it's shown that if we remove the cellphones from the classroom, the kids will get a better education. However, I do agree to some extent with the school committee, their decision right at the moment to not enforce that, because I think before we enforce that, we have to figure out how we're going to enforce it. We can't just all of a sudden throw this mandate down and expect the teachers and the administration is going to have a, a simple answer as how to, where do the phones go? How do we get them back to the kids? Or are they just not allowed to have them in the school from the moment they arrive? I think that's an easy solution, but there's something that has to be figured out before we move forward with some kind of a ban outright on cellphones.
Amanda Baselier.
I definitely have concern about cellphone usage in schools. I see that with my own children, not able to be present in conversation and in family gatherings. I see it in my professional life with employees not able to perform their jobs because they're distracted. But I hear the pushback that some students don't feel safe or some families don't feel safe without having a direct connection to their children for whatever reason that is. So I think we need to listen to that. We need to make sure that they're heard. We need to make sure if there is a valid reason for those cellphones to be accessible in the classroom during an emergency, that those students have the ability to do that so that they can feel safe. You know, that's, that's a basic need. If students don't feel safe, they're, they're not going to be able to learn. So we need to address those concerns first before we take a look at the logistics of how we can enforce. Thank you.
Thank you. Jill Story.
So I've worked in schools long enough to see self, schools without cellphones and now schools with cellphones, and I see definitely the harm that cellphones have to learning and how disruptive they are. I also think something that gets missed is that a lot of times, students will reach out to their parents like throughout the entire day, and parents will respond back and forth. And I think that really restricts a student's ability to problem solve and figure things out on their home, on their own. So I remember my oldest daughter would text me all the time like, "Oh, my gosh, the worst thing just happened." And I would read it, and I would turn it over, and I would ignore it. And when I would follow up with her after, at the end of the day, she'd be like, "Oh, no, it was fine. It was just this, this," or whatever. And so I think that's really important. All of the research suggests that cellphones are harmful to kids, but I think the policy subcommittee made the right decision in waiting right now until we have the supports, the resources, and the time to plan for a bell-to-bell ban.
Yanni Collins.
Thank you. I do also believe strongly in the research in that students do better overall mentally when they don't have their phones in front of them. I think part of the issue surrounding it is just fear of the unknown, and that comes with a lot of education. Our current policy does ban phones in the classroom, and that minimizes phones in the hallways as we've followed up with the administration. So as we continue to ban phones, it's almost like a progressive rollout, and as concerns arise and we address them one by one, we'll definitely have a better plan when, hopefully, the state also mandates it. We'll be better prepared, and there, there will be less panic overall.
Thank you. Thomas Graneman.
Yes, I also support bell-to-bell cellphone ban, cushioned with whatever implementation issues are needed. I would say we're, we're not ready to do it right now, but I think the superintendent and the team could have put, could put together a package that is workable. I think it really is, the research suggests students learn more. I think it's important for students to spend time attending to their classes and attending, talking to each other rather than talking on a, on a cellphone. They've got many hours a day after school to, to deal with them.
And Bobby Brown.
So as a concerned parent that does share a lot of those safety concerns and would love to, my, both of my daughters actually just got cellphones, and it's just as everyone says, it's not great for them. We don't like seeing our kids on cellphones all the time, and we want them to interact socially. It could be harmful socially. I essentially feel that a lot more research is needed because there's absolutely no justifiable reason to have a cellphone in a classroom. But we have to find a good intermediary that allows us as parents to be able to contact our children as moments' notice as well as they can contact us at a moment's notice.
Thank you. How is the role of a ward school committee member different from an at-large school committee member? And we will start with Amanda Baselier from Ward 4.
There's really, in my mind, there's no difference. Once elected to school committee, we're all here with the goal to represent the city at large. I think that, you know, for me, being a ward candidate, it means that I'm coming from that part of the community, and I'm representing that ward on school committee. But again, anyone from any part all over the city should feel comfortable to reach out to any school committee member at any time with their concerns, and certainly decisions need to be made for, for the city as a whole.
Thank you. Jill Story, Ward 5.
So I agree that once you're on school committee, I don't think there's much of a distinction. I think all of the decisions you're making should be about what's in the best interest of Haverhill students, and they come from all over. I think the benefit to being, again, a ward representative is that you have people who know you, who can rely on you, who feel comfortable coming to you, and you're an access point to what is happening in the schools. Because maybe your kids were in school with them, you know, my, my kids have gone to schools within my ward, and so I have some familiarity with staff there or, or administration or things like that. And so sometimes it's also just like providing, being a sounding board for people to voice some of their concerns and then being able to raise some awareness to the full school committee.
Thank you. Yanni Collins, Ward 6.
Yes, as far as making decisions, as it's been said, we make decisions for all the students. We see Haverhill Public Schools in a broader sense, and we weigh those considerations. However, coming from a different ward and having different privileges and perspectives definitely adds insight when we are making those decisions. And having different neighborhood folks feel like, "You're my representative. I can come to you," and you just have more insight in that area. But as far as making a broader decision, it is seen as the city on a whole basis.
Thank you. And Thomas Graneman, Ward 7.
Yeah, I think the role of a ward representative and at-large representative is exactly the same once they're here. I think the big difference is they try to, in the wards, you're able to connect more with your own, your own neighborhood. And when I did campaigning door-to-door, I got a lot of insight into how people in my ward felt about things. I was, Ward 7 is kind of Lower Bradford, which has a little bit different things, different perspective. I was, you know, wondering about some people who were, because I'm a strong proponent of public education, and a lot of people in Lower Bradford send their kids to private school. And what I found was those people are people who also value education, and they value public education as well as the education for their students. So I, I'm concerned, you know, that I think people bring that perspective. I think, okay, that's it.
Thank you. Okay, and we're going to go to Bobby Brown, Ward 2.
Excellent. So as I said during the first question, you know, being able to represent my community, my neighborhood, the schools in my community, I feel very fortunate to be able to do that. And working with the diversity in the city, the diverse different wards, bringing all those issues and meeting at City Hall and bringing that together, I think we're all going to have great perspectives, having the, you know, our thumb on the pulse of each of our own neighborhoods and meld everybody together right at City Hall.
Thank you. And David Schultz, Ward 3.
I pretty much agree with everybody else on here. Once elected to the school committee, there is no difference in the decision-maker and anything like that between the ward committee members and the at-large committee members. But it does make it much easier to campaign if you're a ward candidate, and as far as I can tell. And I also think, like everybody has said too, it also makes it, going around knocking on doors and stuff like that, I did realize that these people I have a direct connection with, and if I am elected, they'll know like, "Oh, I can just talk to Dave. He lives around the corner from me," or "Dave's a couple blocks away." And it makes that connection where I'm out in the neighborhood anyway, I'm out and about in my community, in my area, they'll have a direct contact, a person to contact and feel like is their representative on school committee.
Thank you. Do you think school spending and its related impact on property taxes is too low, too high, or just right? Part two, if too high, and assuming there's no waste, fraud, or abuse, what would you favor cutting? And for this question, we'll start with Jill Story, Ward 5.
So I think if we could figure that out, we'd be in a great position, but I think it's a real challenge. So obviously, we all have to be very responsive to taxpayers, because I think people right now especially, like, I opened my fridge, and I was like, "We don't have any food." My husband's like, "The groceries are insane." So everybody is feeling that right now. I think for, for our schools, we do need to spend more. I think Haverhill has been historically underfunded for many, many, many years. I think people are confused by the fact that like the school committee does not like raise the money for the schools, set the budget for the schools. It's the city council, and so we work with the money we are given, which means we are constrained with what we have. And so there's always going to be those questions of like, what do we keep and what do we cut? And I think the goal, since I've been on school committee and before that, but certainly under Dr. Marata, has been to prioritize staff, prioritize teachers, and I agree with that.
Thank you. And we'll go to Yanni Collins, Ward 6.
Thank you.
Do you need me to repeat the question?
You had two parts to it, so if you don't mind repeating.
Sure, no, that's why I'm asking.
Thank you.
Do you think school spending and its related impact on property taxes is too low, too high, or just right? If too high, and assuming there's no waste, fraud, or abuse, what would you favor cutting?
Right, thank you. So obviously, I'm biased. I believe strongly that our students are our future, and that when we invest in our students, we get a huge return on investment in the future. And I know currently that our city budget is strained and that a lot of it does, or a good sizable amount, I've been told, has been allocated to the schools. But I favor enriching our students. There's nothing, I was one of those students, and all the programs that I was able to connect with that fostered my growth helped me then come back and give back. And so how precious is it that then I could help the next generation also do the same for the city? So I'm a big believer in all our teachers keeping their jobs, our students having all the materials they need, and increasing our mental health and wellness programs.
Thank you. Thomas Graneman, Ward 7. Do you need me to repeat the question?
No, I think I can answer that. So I think the important thing to understand is sort of the way we finance things. And we get a lot of money from the state. That money comes as a part, the state sets a foundation budget for every district. The gateway cities tend, most all of them tend to spend right around the foundation budget. And the reason is that we get required net school spending. We have to bring, the city spending has to match what the state believes we can afford to do. We get, we have, we have to do that, and we get match on that. So that, those dollars are easy to do. Beyond that, if we go beyond this foundation budget, the city has to pay 100% of the costs. So that's, makes it difficult to go, go, go beyond, beyond that. So in terms of spending, I've been an advocate, strong public schools and strong education. I think we're going to need to look closely, particularly if we get to fiscal '28 and the state pulls back, we may have to step up from the city's point of view and make sure we've, covering what needs to be done.
Thank you. And Bobby Brown, Ward 2. Do you need me to repeat that?
No, I don't. Thank you. I believe that our students and our education system here in Haverhill is the best investment that we could possibly make. So if there are line items that are able to be cut without a direct impact to our education systems or any of our absolute important resources here in the city, I think that might be a great idea, just to be able to address certain safety concerns, first of all, in our schools that we saw on the news last week, as well as making sure we have teacher retention. Because I know the numbers are up in certain grades here in Haverhill, and in order to maintain that, we really need to make sure that we retain our teachers. That's because of our educators taking care of our students. And in order to have a strong education system, we have to make sure that teacher retention is one of the most important things, top.
Thank you. David Schultz, Ward 3.
I, I think the schools are underfunded, and I think the teachers and the ESPs are underpaid, but I also understand that, I mean, I'm a homeowner, so I get that I don't want the taxes going up. But I think that, I mean, the one thing I learned during this campaign, and I sat down, did the candidate interviews with the HEA, I, it became clear to me that part of the, that the biggest problem with safety in the schools, or the teacher's safety in the schools, and with the problems with some of the school buildings is staffing. I mean, and if we add more staff, that also means more funds have to go to the school. I wouldn't want to see any teacher layoffs. I wouldn't want to see us have to compensate for, to keep teachers and have to lay off police officers or firefighters. I just think we need to figure out a way to fund the schools properly. I know the next couple of years in particular are going to be really difficult, and I just think that every member of the school committee needs to be participating and active in helping make these decisions.
Thank you. Amanda Baselier, Ward 4, will have the last word.
I think that, you know, as I go around the community, certainly homeowners and others are expressing concern about the taxes that they're paying now. They're concerned about their taxes being raised, but of course, they're also concerned about the, the teachers and the ESP rates and the programs that are available in the schools. So I think that, you know, everyone in the community is conflicted with the answer to this question, because of course, we want everything to improve, but we also don't want the expenses to rise. And just like we need to do in our own homes, we need to really look at what the priorities are, where the money's going. We need to take a good, hard look at, at places that maybe we could tighten up and places that we could enhance in order to work within the budget that we've been given.
Thank you very much. You kicked off the last set, right? Just wanted to make sure I didn't lose my place. All right, thank you. While attendance in Haverhill Public Schools has improved slightly over this past year, what new measures would you propose to return to pre-COVID attendance rates? And we will start with Yanni Collins, Ward 6.
Thank you. That's a great question, and I think the, my first thought was to listen to the students. A lot of our students are struggling mentally and openly. A lot of our students don't feel connected to our schools. A lot of our students are struggling with their own health issues. And so if we don't invest in the things that will get them to school, such as being healthy mentally, physically, why would they attend? So those are, my focuses are not just looking at the attendance rate, but really asking ourselves why, and then why again, and then why again. And I know that we do that now, but I do believe that we can dig a little deeper.
Thomas Graneman, Ward 7.
Yeah, could you repeat the question?
Yes. While attendance in Haverhill Public Schools has improved slightly over the past year, what new measures would you propose to return to pre-COVID attendance rates?
Okay, well, I think the issues differ by level. I think the elementary school, working on student engagement there requires working closely with the families and making sure people know school every day is important, you need to get your kid to school. Toward the middle school and certainly at the high school, we need to be putting more and more responsibility on the students. And I think that, addressing that requires a high degree of student engagement. I think it really needs to be working, I know this is a long-term problem, changing the culture of the school, where all the students know how important it is to be there and why they're there, and know that they're going to learn something every day that's useful to them. So I think there's a lot of things about student engagement that, project-based learning, giving students some opportunities to have individual learning plans. So there's a lot of ways we can work on engaging the students so they'll feel they have a reason to show up for school at the high school, I don't think.
Thank you. And that question, Bobby Brown, do you need me to repeat the question?
No, thank you. I would absolutely agree with both Yanni and Tom, that I think where we really need to start is absolutely engaging with the students and finding out the real answers why. You know, why would you not go to school? Whether it be a mental health issue, whether it be a transportation issue, anything, or as Tom said, maybe you're not feeling so engaged in your learning experience at the time. So I really feel like, as well as adding in, having more engagement with families as a whole, and making sure that everyone has the supports that they need to be able to be healthy, be at school, and have an enriching learning environment.
Thank you. David Schultz, Ward 3.
I think obviously student engagement is the, is the key to this. And also, I think this is, this should be a priority of sorts for us, because there is a direct correlation there between attendance and test scores. And I think that's also, I could be wrong, but I'm pretty sure that where we saw the best improvement in attendance was also the, where we saw the best improvement in test scores, which was in the, in the third grade, or in the elementary schools. I think that's something, because that's working there, I think that is something that will, hopefully will carry on, and they will continue to have improved attendance as they move through the school system. And I think with the, with the, the middle school kids currently and the high school kids currently, it's about student engagement. I would be, I don't know this for a fact, but I'd be willing to bet during Spirit Week or while the girls' swim team was doing as well as they were, probably their, the attendance was a little better because kids were excited to be there. There was stuff going on that made them proud to be in the Haverhill schools. And I just think those are things that we need to work on. We need to generate more excitement about the schools, about things going on in the schools, and how kids are doing.
Thank you. Amanda Baselier, Ward 4.
So I don't think that a minute is long enough to talk about this issue. I think it's multifaceted. And since you brought up the pandemic, I'll, I'll address that first in case I run out of time. So certainly coming post-pandemic, which, which we still are, there are so many concerns with, with, not only with mental health, but certainly with finances, you know, in people's homes. Things are so different than they were prior to the pandemic. And I think we obviously need to take a look at the biggest offenders and find out what's going on at home and see how we can support them. Again, basic needs need to be met so that students can attend and can learn. But the pandemic also had a great impact on children's ability to socialize with each other. My son, I think he was a sophomore when the country shut down, and he was already a little awkward, sorry. But he, you know, his social skills did not develop at the level that they should have because he was not in school. He wasn't engaged. We need to give these kids the self-confidence to, to speak and to engage, and I am out of time. Thank you.
Well, you're right about the complicated question and our schedule here. So let's move on. Jill Story.
So I agree, super complicated. Everything that's been said, I agree with. We do need a different approach at each level. So elementary school, you have to be engaging with the parents and making, because they're responsible for getting their kids to school. So I think that's where that outreach is. I know that schools will do like attendance breakfast, which I think is such a fun motivator for kids, because they're really excited to have a breakfast for like having perfect attendance for the month or whatever. I think in the middle school, the, it starts to shift a little bit more, obviously, as they go through middle school to become on the kid. And we really want students to understand why it's important for you to be here. And I know the district is already doing so much work, but we are constrained by staffing. You need people to be able to have these meetings. You know, we're doing MTSS here, which is education speak for like finding out what kids need and then providing that additional support. And that, that's attendance and whatnot, too. I think at the high school level, we see a huge problem. So, you know, having those regular cycles, having those meetings, figuring out how to engage students, making sure that they feel like they belong, that they want to come to school, that they see the value of being in school. And I have to say, not making everything rely on Google Classroom, because if they can just turn in assignments on Google Classroom, then they don't need to go to class. can just turn in assignments on Google Classroom, then they don't need to go to class.
And Yanni Collins, unless we started with you, I've lost track. We did. It's getting late, I guess. All right. So at this point, I'm going to give an opportunity for each one of you to give a one-minute closing statement. Unfortunately, luckily, I suppose you're not competing with the at-large candidates who missed that opportunity, and we, not all are here, so we're going to have to forego that. But let's start, if we're in order, we'll go back to, well, I think we start with Tom.
Okay. Yeah, well, I'd like-
Tom Graneman, Ward Seven, sorry.
Ward Seven. Yeah, I'd like to say, I've been on school committee for a year and a half now, and I'm very proud to be serving. And I appreciate most of the ability to work as part of a team toward improving our schools. And I think the people we've had on the previous school committee, we're all committed to better education. And it's been great to work with people who have an education background, people who have a health background, people who have lawyers. We're going to be missing some lawyers next time around. But this has been part of my career, has always been working in multidisciplinary teams. And so this, I'm comfortable with this. And I think this is where I think the school committee really has the ability to pull together and get things done for our community.
Thank you. Bobby Brown, Ward Two.
Thank you. Well, I'm extremely excited to get directly to work as, as fast as possible, you know, with bringing my community to City Hall. I feel that I bring a very unique set of skills with my knowledge of collective bargaining agreements, my knowledge of the National Labor Relations Act. I'm just really hoping to be able to dedicate my time and be able to make education greater here in the city of Haverhill, for our teachers, for our students, for our residents, and for our future of Haverhill. Thank you.
David Schultz, Ward Three.
My name is Dave Schultz. I'm running for school committee in Ward Three. To me, this, the, one of the biggest parts of this campaign is about being involved. I've always been a person who's been active in the community and involved in the schools. Things like getting the student newspaper back into print at the high school, or even attending the past two weeks, the career fairs at J.G. Whittier Middle School and at, where was it, Constantino. I like doing that. I like being involved in the community. And to me, that's a great part of what this is about. It's about every member of the school committee, especially over the next couple of years when the budget's going to be really difficult for the school. Every member of the school committee needs to be participating and active and be there when the difficult decisions need to be made. And that's what I plan to be, if you so elect me to this, to this seat. And I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Amanda Baselier, Ward Four.
Yeah, I think that what we've heard tonight, you know, with the questions that are brought forth, is that we, we really have a difficult couple of years coming up, and there's a lot of challenges that are coming down the pike. I think it's going to take a school committee that is, is, is run by really, really strong leadership. And I think we need leaders that are, are communicative, that are really looking for genuine collaboration with all parties involved. I think we need to have creative ideas, and we really, really need to work together to come up with solutions. I view this as an opportunity to give back to the community. The Haverhill school system supported my children and myself, and, and I hope that I have the opportunity to do the same for other families. If elected, I, I promise that I will show up. I, I promise that I will work hard and, and that I will listen. And so I, I hope to earn your vote on November 4th.
Thank you. Closing statement, Jill Story, Ward Five.
Serving on school committee has been an honor and a privilege. It's hard work, but it's, I, I truly believe that these schools are the foundation of any community. And I know that we have very strong schools because I've seen it firsthand, and I know we have exceptional teachers in this community. And my children are a product of Haverhill Public Schools, and I owe a lot to the teachers and to the schools for, for who they have become. I know that Haverhill Public Schools can be extraordinary, and I'm very excited to continue this very hard, but very, very important work to make our schools exceptional. Thank you.
Thank you. And Yanni Collins, last word, closing statement, Ward Six.
Thank you, last but not least. These are really uncertain times, and we need leaders that will certainly put the community first, put our students first. And as a Haverhill, I know the importance of investing in our future leadership. And I am excited to be part of a team that will move Haverhill forward. We have great programs, great students, staff, and it just needs a boost, and it starts with us, the leadership.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you, everyone. If we give a round of applause to our ward candidates. Now, well, to make all of this really worthwhile is if you take into account a couple of things. Early voting begins Saturday, October 25th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at City Hall. You're going to go into the Newcombe Street side of the building. I won't go through the whole schedule, but early voting continues daily through Friday at City Hall, Monday through Friday. Now, the last date and time to register to vote, I think these candidates would all want you to do that for the November 4th general election, is Friday, October 24th at 5:00 p.m. I want to thank again Pinnacle Co-Working and Events Space, represented by George Peters and Seth Cordes, for providing this wonderful space that I think is going to be a second studio for WHAV. Thank you. And thank you also to WHAV reporter Caroline Louise Cole, who offered an interview, an overview of what you've heard tonight on air and online tomorrow. WHAV's Mark Lemay, who managed the studio anchor desk tonight, and WHAV listeners, readers, and underwriters who helped pay for local news. I'm Tim Coco, 97.9 WHAV on radio, 24/7 live stream, and the Wavelength's Daily E- Newspaper. Need to learn more, you can go to WHAV.net. Thank you for letting me work that in. Good night, everybody. [applause][1784.38]